Does the board subcommittee draft this or does the staff draft it?
Well, I don't get to vote president. But you put some committee together. I can put together a subcommittee or I don't know how, you know. Are there people who want to work on it, I guess, would be the question Derek does.
I really would encourage you to though, because you seem to be very aware of the issues.
Yeah, I would like to.
And I'd be willing to step off if we're gonna find like a meeting.
So.
Yeah, I don't know.
You know, and it could be done probably if somebody drafts first version, I would think you'd do it. Email. Just something.
Maybe we just talk for a moment after the meeting, just to strategize for a second.
I possibly don't have everyone's email. Actually, likely don't have an email address for everyone.
On our website.
Oh, they are.
They didn't just owe you your emails, right? I just.
That's it.
We put the I C P L emails on my.
I thought it was. I'm from it already. But addresses aren't anymore.
Address and everything's out there.
Yeah, that's. No is major contribution. I mean, geez, there's other contributions too, but. We just all assumed, of course, you have to put all that information out there.
Just as a note, as folks start drafting, if there are, if there's a role that you want to articulate, the director or staff or any, anything is reflective of that, how we believe or what we might do. You know, I'm always happy to go speak to other board meetings to go typically when there are dramatic public issues at libraries. At a minimum, the bigger library directors will call and sort of say, hey, I hear what's going on. If there's anything we could do, you know, we're happy to, to come speak to your board, to come to speak, make a public comment, whoever might help. So there is another level of, there's things that don't feel like you could fit into that statement, but you'd like to communicate. You can always fold that into how we reach out.
But I actually think if I'm understanding correctly, there's potentially here for an interesting dynamic, because if one library might make a statement, there might be others in the state that will make a statement that would get the attention to more, because they think otherwise, the boy's gonna say Johnson County. Whatever, let's do it just because it's Iowa City. But like if others, if someone else curious say that. Names into your polls, you know.
And I think the letter will have a different impact than, I'm gonna be honest, I usually take a phone. Right, it's less discoverable. If the board, if I did say, hey, I support your situation, later Tom called me and said, I don't know if the board supports. Then it's, it's a more, it's more of just a personal. But I like the idea of a board statement, I think it will. It will, it will be a good gesture.
And I, I think it's also important to think about the impact that it has on our local community. I think people would be glad to hear us affirm that.
So where would this letter appear?
My next question was, is the final publishing of where this should go?
Is it going to representatives or?
The subcommittee decide that and make a recommendation?
And read it in that day, Iowa City.
Yeah, just.
So what did, okay, we find out where Austin sent theirs or like did these just send?
Immediate release. Yeah, I would just do a press release.
We could.
Like this action.
Put it in the window.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think, you know, it's, it's what's your goal? And if your goal is to legislature, they go look at it, it's to send it to the register, the dorm register and, or send it to be released and include them in the list of. The papers can receive that.
Yeah, pretty much the statewide newspaper, the dorm register, that's all the corners of the state nurses, like the Gazette, which may not.
Yeah.
Publishing letters.
I think that's kind of a, maybe a good question for the staff PR team to think about. How we would publicize effectively faster resolution.
So just in summary, the committee will make a draft, will bring it back here. The staff will also look at a circulation strategy of what's the best way to put it forward. But will we get to the February meeting?
Moving on to an update on COVID opening guidelines.
So this is something we talked about over the last month, the idea of just evolving. Documents that sort of helps us make decisions about services and our work model during COVID. We've gone from pretty scripted benchmarks. Document to fail document to now we're sort of back into the, I don't really know what's gonna happen, but this is what we think we'll do. And really what this has led to is what we hope will be a concise. Document of what are the essential services, both external and internal. At what level of staff absenteeism can we, can we make those happen? So, and I would say. This, I really hope that we wouldn't need to create a document like this, but with the. How contagious the current. Wary to, I'm just sort of looking at the ripple effects of there's an exposure in an elementary class and how many people that can affect, and then how long the testing cycle could be so, we want to be prepared. I know it seems to think about a 50% rate of absenteeism seems out of, out of line, but it really, it could happen. So that's where we're, where we're coming from with this. We actually had started an absenteeism based document sort of way in the beginning of COVID. And we went back to that sort of glean what we could from it, but thinking, you know, our thinking has changed a lot. So this was a lot of redrafting. And I, it, you know, it's absolutely in draft form, but we wanted to share what we had to kind of get some feedback from the board about, does it make sense to this group to base it on the essential services and staff availability? Are there other benchmarks you'd like to see worked in? And as we, both as we work through this, clarifying this, and then as we move into implementation, what is this group's vision for communication and why make these shifts? So if, for instance, we got to a point where we thought we needed to change operational hours because we couldn't cover our social responsibilities, how does, do we want to do? Special meetings, like what, what would work for this group? I don't want to have a situation where a significant decision is made that feels like it wasn't discussed adequately.
Gets a question as a starting point is what absentee rates have been, hopefully we've just been through the most contagious piece of it. I work somewhere where many people don't mask and we've seen absentee rates significant, you know, how is it meant at the library?
Trying to think.
And you're thinking this part, it must not be terrible.
Yeah, I would say on a given day, we could have, I don't know, eight or 10 people call out. Across all schools, too, maybe?
Yeah, great. Okay, so this is really good. Yeah.
I personally like this document. I think it's, it's very useful identifying the things that you feel absolutely have to happen. And as far as, I mean, at the beginning of COVID, we. When we made decisions, we did it as special board meetings by Zoom. I don't know if we could do Zoom meetings anymore for that, we couldn't, but it seems to me like. If you got to 50% absenteeism, well, that would be pretty dramatic, but also the way Omicron works, it seems like that could, you know, it could change really quickly. I mean, I don't think it. Think if you get to 30% or whatever, you have a lot of people out, I think, you know, in a, in a week's time, you. They could be back, you know, I, I don't know.
I also don't think we could have a special, like if 30% calls, call in at 8:00 AM, we can't have a special meeting at 8:30 to change.
Yeah, I mean, I, I really liked the idea of sorted activities, you know, by, by essentialness. And I think you should just let us know if you have to do something weird, because Hannah points out, it's gonna happen fast.
I'm looking at this as soon as there's a lot of cross training going on. And that, you know, that the people who are absent or people who are attending can handle some of these tasks. And whether it's realistic or not.
All of this could train their whole department.
It's just dependent on multiple people can have to do certain tasks and.
It's just.
Yeah, right. And, and there's something we can do in advance, it's just, it looks good on paper, but I think it's gonna be more fragile.
Yeah, so I did include the other staffing scenarios that might require closure. Any one department is completely out, all but two number leadership team are out. If the classification of staff is out, like all pages are.
I mean, like, how many people really have to pay our bills?
Maybe three.
And they all work next to each other, very close.
Do we often have like a bill that has to pay today?
Well, that was part of the conversation of trying to decide what is essential.
Paychecks are important.
What do we, what could we let ride for 30 days or 60 days? We've had these contracts for a billion years. But there are the, the, the payroll. The fortunate thing about that and other really prescriptive bill paying is we do have city to lean on. So they wouldn't be thrilled on a Tuesday morning to get the call that we're not processing payroll and we need them to do it. But I think that they would be able to, unless they also were suffering from.
Nobody in Iowa City.
We could, I'm sure that, you know, we would, we would just have to figure out sort of moment to moment what's.
Pick up that bed we'd be hoarding toilet paper by then. How can you even imagine?
So we can keep kind of tweaking and maybe add a piece about what that communication would look like. What we plan for that to look like. And just keep, whether it keep evolving as we move forward.
And should you have to do a whole building closure? Let's hope that never happens, but you already somewhat have the PR put together because you had to do a whole building closure already, unfortunately. And your timeline for communicating that to the community.
And that was about a Sunday morning.
Yeah. Fairly chaotic, but I'm sure that there's still people pounding on the door. Because that's a public service.
Okay, we can move on to the ADA accreditation review. Man, they have to measure a lot of things.
So the reason I included this was, if anybody remembers the last accreditation cycle. John Meeley had a lot of questions, I think we all agreed. But he had a special interest in it. As, and, and we just decided next time, if we can make it work, let's get this out of month and days. So in case people have questions or want to follow up with other, this was done in-house by our facilities folks. It is accurate informations we're gonna get internally, but if there's anything people question or want double checked, we could ask the city engineers to, to take a look as well. They won't know anything, you know, they'll use the same information that Brad and Joe used, but I just wanted to put it out there because last time it was sort of a point of stress.
This is institutional memory, but maybe it's not true. Aren't we in violation of the handrail in front of the parking area with this part of the accreditation? Did we ever fix that? There's something about the height of that railing in the front of the building. And it violates the stamp, the criteria. And so I don't know if we decided not to choose this one. Is that violation, but there's a history, there's an institutional history about this.
Which.
We violate this.
Like where the book return slots are?
Yeah, it's.
On the ramp there?
Yeah, the railing is off by a couple of inches in terms of the height, Brad probably knows. But because of that, we were careful about how we handled this one. Do you remember this?
In the back.
Yeah, there's something that we, how we handled this because we got deep.
And the handicap parking spot is in violation and so this, we were vulnerable at one point. Right, but I think we might have had to put a note, but that railing issue, I remember there's something outside of. And it seems, do you remember, like, there's something weird in the history about. That handrail that violates this accreditation standard. And, and we kept saying, this is insane, but we, we might find again ahead of that before this goes in, if you got the situation history.
Well, one thing about the accreditation is that this specific portion, in effect, from Ron Eldredge, is that we just have to go through.
Yeah, I think that's what we decided, we couldn't do anything about it, so we violate this.
Right, and it just.
But it was something, it's something really just weird.
I think what the state wants us to do is to, each accreditation cycle, go through one of these exercises so that we can identify the issues. And it's not necessarily embarrassing, accreditation itself.
And Brad might be the one to remember, I just remembered measure it, we was measured these people.
I could ask him, but.
It's something so ridiculous, but it's like it doesn't.
I remember right from last time, that was one of. Trusty Beal concerns, we were sort of following directions, but we essentially turned in, it was to say, yes to go. The state library does a kid, but we're publicly saying, we check no on this. So if we did that and we don't remedy it, then what does that mean?
May I take you, don't, you're gonna come back to the board, but I just think someone might want to look at what we did last time because there was some discussion.
Extremely rare to find a, a large public building that's just perfect.
Right, but this was like a really ridiculous.
I see that.
Well, from our viewpoint, like it wasn't anything functional, it was just a standard.
I, I have expressed to the state library, my dissatisfaction with asking us to do this. Just as an example, I just opened it at random. We are reporting whether or not no more than three quarters of an inch high to the top half of it, to a beveled ledge, no steeper than one ratio of two. If that, like, we are fortunate that we have a facilities team that has our blueprints and our building plans. You, if you give this to some small library, I mean, how are you supposed to measure this? I think that it puts, it would have been maybe a wiser investment to have, to hire a firm to go to the libraries that maybe were older or, you know, more.
Right, that's where the building's stable, did they really change?
Do an actual assessment. But it remains part of the accreditation report and I didn't feel like it was.
Like, it's just the number of no's that you check changes your, like, it's not one violation, but it's like if you have 30 violations.
I don't even.
No, I did it at the Winfield Public Library, which was never gonna move up a tier because it didn't have a handicapped accessible bathroom in the metal shed that it occupied. So like, I understand that piece a little bit.
If you're taking no or NA does not negatively affect your accreditation. And that's another piece that I'd like to see explored is, why do we tie it to that if it's not connected? I think it's just, it makes it one less duty right here. But I will check in with Brad and others about what they remember about the handrail.
I think if they, it was handrail, then it might have been something about the handicap spot, you get asked about that, too. There was something about.
I think.
But it's like something we have to know that, that's looking at violate some standard.
Handicap spot is, my, it's might be, is, it'll do with election standards.
I don't remember yet. Yeah.
That's how ours is because of the anger.
Yeah. Brad did it last time, so Brad is the one who.
This report specifically says priority two, and we didn't, we didn't do priority two last time, we did priority something else. But we did two, two, a while back, we had done two before. That I've been involved with, but, I mean, I remember the, the conversation last time, but it was a different priority. I don't remember what it was.
I think it was specifically.
Something like that, because we talked a lot about the lobby, seems like, okay. That report would be elsewhere.
You know, I tried sort of a different, different model with the director of the quarter, to mix it up, see what people think. And I put those comments about the, the stats and the, the other reports in here, thinking it might make it easier than having a bunch of no's. That takes up pretty much bulk, and I'm happy to talk about it or not. Just gave her what outline of, of other things. Some of them, like the OSHA vaccination and testing standards, I guess, the board could be aware, just in case they'll come back or not. That, there was obviously some staff conversation about how folks knew about that. All these significant issues, and we had very high compliance rates with reporting status to HR, but I think it's important to know in case it comes up again. I do have one addition to the report, since this was submitted for publication. Jen Norr has accepted the position of the administrative services coordinator, so Jen's here tonight observing. She'll start her official duties on Monday. And we're thrilled that she accepted. Otherwise, happy to answer your question.
So it's one more position to be filled.
Well, I had the pleasure of sitting at a table with Jen, the staff in service day. I didn't know her at the time, but everybody else there was saying, I can't believe how many jobs you do. We have another one.
Anything else, comments, questions for Alison?
Over to center program. We came back, what we've lost, or whatever continuity we had with. For the pandemic and all sorts of new. There's some of the old folks coming back, there's an expectation. Library. So. This began just in January, so it's still in the fledgling states, but we've already seen some good. Response to the new programming guidelines, sort of. World space, so it's not just for the video game hangout space, which had been for years. As great as that is, that was our primary audience, so. This is just another way of connecting one on one with the. The courage and music, volunteer programming, which is made for us as well. That's been going great to get more adults in the room, making connections, and also just having community members getting great. Shave it in. Working. Really expect. The worst thing, hang out with.
That worked. It was very impressive.
And there's some of the highlights from the digital media lab. So that are. Go on display, go on, wait after the meeting. But it may not look very impressive, but I, I sort of feel like we've been doing, Stacey's been doing a few of these kinds of programs that are just sort of. Spontaneous creativity and what does that lead to? While you're there, you sort of learn about the space as well, the digital resources that you create. Just to be able to have fun and make mistakes with stuff is, is a novel concept of progress.
Good job with color in your report this one.
So sorry about those partages.
And now we sign off.
Welcome on the stuff until we're just doing your advance. I work Wednesday from five to six at the Bodas and the Tifa is hopping.
It's great.
We're all doing different things in there and having a little fun and talking to each other and it's just such wonderful.
That's great. Okay, Sam.
Just wanted to point out to some folks who are maybe on the board that I kind of inherited an excellent volunteer program that had to kind of like dissolve during COVID. A lot of what our volunteers did was check in to their sports, which is quite, quite amazing, a novelty at public libraries. If you have good history and experience with it. So when we're thinking about how our pages have really taken that role on, and we almost have like the library school that feeds into page program, and this gives them experience with the ILS, and this kind of gives value to our staff. What can we do to add value to our, our volunteers? So we kind of brought out some more front-facing things, like the welcome desk can kind of link into their feedback. And so I'm just trying to give a snapshot of some of those innovation pockets of CAS. And I think one of them is just how the page program is growing. I, I think it's awesome that they've been able to do mobile paging and save us some paper. I kind of like to lean into those city initiatives, going through some like, we're saving you 15,000. I, I think it's awesome that they've been able to do both paging and save us some paper. I kind of like to lean into those city initiatives, going great, so like, we're saving fifteen thousand pages a year, so we got that. But I also just kind of want to give you a snapshot that we are kind of starting to level off. Our item reserves are, are obviously under shit at fault, because folks are very aware of how to use the whole shop after last year. So it's, that increase is great, they're just also seeing that, that leveling off of, of folks are also coming in. So it's not twenty-two thousand, it's, it's closer to what we were expecting. And then just kind of giving you some highlights with programming. Along with looking at the page program and our volunteer program, this was an opportunity for us to think about how we conduct outreach. It was very season heavy, and folks have not wanted to see us for a while, understandably. But now we're kind of going back in with our lobby stocks, so it's nice to connect with those groups again. But this opportunity also gave us a moment to think, okay, are there some underserved populations that we haven't been doing, rocking some outreach with? So I'm very proud of Heidi and Shauna for taking some of that time on Friday mornings to, to go visit Craylude and, and kind of see how we can support the shelter and make sure that folks have access to services. So just kind of want to highlight some of that work.
Is the phone bill fixed?
We've got batteries, we've got onions, books.
And heat. Harry, you want to highlight anything in your report?
Just that we are continuing to go about raising the money for these fun initiatives. Who knows what else? I mean, that's in the budget. Anyway, we got a great program last night with local libraries lit and to me, a book set, I learned this by mistake. For me, eighty-nine people had registered, fifty-five showed up, they were online. She was fantastic. She talked about public libraries, I don't. The impact of libraries on for life. Hercu Community College is now one to teach from this program. University of Library, I understand, last thing, her cu is, is it in there? Something classes, maybe also exploring that possibility. So it's just really exciting to see it grow and see it kind of take off in the community. R O Huang is our next speaker on March third. Last next program, there are ten people who registered directly, and they burned that. So we're excited too, tomorrow, we'll be shot that scientific copy and works in University Heights. I'm gonna try and stay up till midnight, it's gonna be online order, since we got over the weekend, but it's just great to be in a place. I don't think we've ever been turned down by a community partner who says, no, sorry, don't want to help the library. When we call and ask them. I'd be happy to answer some questions.
So where to find out?
Oh, no.
Is there another program? But there is a program that starts here soon for the library.
Well, we'll rush through the rest of it here.
Oh, one, one last thing. Is this the right time, Daddy? Okay.
To committee reports. Miscellaneous, I don't know what that is, but the president's report, I really didn't hear a report, because I couldn't think of anything to put in it. I was looking at the agenda, and apparently next month I am to appoint a nominating, oops, nominating committee. So if anyone is interested in serving on the nominating committee, we usually have three people. And they nominate the officers for next year, and the position would the officer would begin their, their job in July, with the July meeting, and it would go run through June. So if you're interested in serving on that committee, let me know if you're, I don't care from anybody, I'll just pick some people. And I don't know, where did we leave the other people who want to be on a committee to evaluate the strategic plan update report format?
For the next strategic plan, do we want to do it now?
We can do it either way. I think we can, we're working to design on the next one either way. And we can also adapt how we're doing it now, or we can just take a different approach.
Maybe with the next report. I, I personally don't have a problem with this one, but maybe some do.
We've been talking about a lot of committees.
If we try it a little bit different next time, and it still doesn't feel like we're getting closer, we can do a committee of that. And then maybe with more intentionality, it's beginning of the next one.
Um, so basically, let me know if you're interested in being on the nominee. Announcements from members?
Need this committee report from.
That's next. Okay, committee reports. We've got two committees that are active right now, I think, the, the foundation, membership or representatives.
And we had our latest meeting on Tuesday this week. And, oh, sorry, we're having a meeting on, on February seventeenth. Thank you, Daddy. I was wondering, I was like, oh, God, how is that answered up that poorly? Thank you. That's all.
Okay, and then the other, the ongoing working committee right now is the director evaluation committee.
And we are moving along and we'll be ready for the evaluation in February. Thanks to everyone for doing surveys. Except me, I haven't done it. I'm gonna abstain, because I haven't been here long enough to have an opinion.
That's valid. Okay, communications, are there any that weren't in the packet? Then we are on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Are there amendments that need to be made, or is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as it appears in the packet?
My name is Ms. Stolden the Minutes. So if that can be corrected.
I have a feeling you're in trouble next week.
And I'm quite used to my name.
But just remember, she's doing your evaluation.
Are there other changes that need to be made to the minutes?
If you'd like, we could go through the heavy plan update and touch on those things that are unclear. If we were already amendment, it's not a big deal to redo it. We did, that would catch it before it goes into the archives.
It's okay.
I'm not asking for any changes. I thought it was great. I, I, my only concern was I didn't understand some of the.
Some of the words.
And one of the objectives, I was.
Are there other changes that need to be made to the minutes? Okay, so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move second.
All in favor? Okay, and then the last item is setting the agenda, which I think we've.
Tell us a little bit about how we're functioning as a warming station for the public right now. Are we opening the doors early for people in these very cold days? Are we just not doing it this year? Is there a place for them to go somewhere?
There, yes. City Hall is the warming center and Robert Ali. Okay, we decided not to, you know, official warming center ones. It really does put a burden on facilities at this potential staff production. We're worried we're not able to maintain it.
Does City Hall make it difficult for some people because of the police department being right there at the front door?
Probably, but Robert Ali is just, just up the block. I think.
It's communicated, okay.
And we haven't.
Okay, so there's, there's something that people know about where they can go. I just, the last couple of weeks have been very.
And when I do see folks that like maybe have slept overnight, or, or, we, we do try to communicate, even if it's just from the one-to-one, like, do you know where the, do you know what's open, you know?
Okay, it's just a change from what we've done in the past, so I just, I appreciate knowing.
Okay, so the agenda for next month, it looks like it includes the director's evaluation, and we will go into closed session for that, and then we'll come back and open up the meeting to the public. Set the hours apparently for next year. I'll announce the nominating committee. I think we have added making a decision about fine-free policy and also reviewing a statement regarding intellectual freedom and collection policies. Anything else added to that?
People would take March off after that agenda.
Maybe, so we have those policy reviews. Okay, in that case, I move to adjourn.